Welcome. This is a call to order for the Sparks Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, May 5, 2016. It's a call to order. It's a roll call, please.
Commissioner Camerota?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Fuens?
Here.
Commissioner Meany?
Here.
Commissioners Spur?
Here.
Commissioner Vanek?
Here.
Commissioner Bowles? Absinthe? Assistant City Attorney Jeff Harmon?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director of Development, Mr. Unley, or not?
Here.
This is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up for any public comment. There will also be an opportunity to comment under individual items. This item is either for a public comment or any action item for, on, or for the general public comment, and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator. Would anyone like to come forward? No public comment. I'd like to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Agenda approved. Approval of the minutes of previous meeting. Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to abstain.
I'd like to abstain. Commissioner Fuens would like to abstain?
Record shows two abstentions. All in favor? Any opposition? Approval of the minutes. Any announcement or committee reports?
Two announcements. One would be that there will not be a second Planning Commission meeting this month in May, so the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for June the 2nd. And then the second announcement is that there is a term that is expiring for the Regional Planning Commission, so obviously the only persons who can be appointed to the Regional Planning Commission are members of this body. The term is currently held by Commissioner Lean. Commissioner Lean has expressed interest in reappointment, and he may be reappointed if there are no other commissioners interested in appointment due to the fact that he's reached his term limit. We're not asking you to take action on this today. We're just announcing that so that you're aware of it, and we will agendize it for action at the June 2nd meeting.
Any informational items?
I would like to speak. It's not so much an informational item. It's something I'd like cleaned up in the record. On the approval of the date, minutes, there were two extensions. They came after the fact, as they typically do, as a point of clarification. And then Chairman Camerota asked for a vote a second time, and there was no response. And so what I'd like the minutes to reflect is that the first vote is effective, and that Commissioner Fuens and Commissioner Spur were abstained from that vote. Thank you.
Do we need to approve the second? Okay. Okay. Informational items? That was it, please. Okay.
Chairman Camerota, we don't have any informational items.
Thank you. All right, we'll proceed with our public hearing items. This item comes in two parts. PCN 16013, consideration of and possible action on a request for a tentative and final approval to amend the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook, including but not limited to the removal of the Marina Lighthouse portion of the plan development associated with development
You're with me a second. I'm trying to zoom this down. I'm not sure how to do that. Because it's not showing. How do I zoom it down? Good at... Whoops. Moved the mic down. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a consideration and possible action on a request of tentative and final approval for an amendment to the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook, including but not limited to the removal of the Marina Lighthouse portion of the plan development and any associated development standards with that and pertaining to any other matters. This is a 19.7-point acres plan development, and they're requesting to remove 2.47. You can see on the exhibit, the outline here in blue is the boundary of the plan development handbook. What the applicant... This, as a brief background, the city council approved the final handbook for Marina Landing Plan Development on... in August of 2002. There was an amendment request in May of 2004, which it was approved by the city council. However, during that approval, there was an also a request to expand the RV park into this portion of the property. The city council did deny that request to expand the RV park. However, the property was still zoned NUD. City council approved an amendment to... a third amendment to the Marina Landing Plan Development on February 27, 2012. This allowed a gas station use and convenience store within the plan development handbook. This allowed the construction of the Maverick, which is located right here, and which has a convenience store. As part of the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook is a parcel, 2.47 acres, which I've outlined in red here. That is known in the handbook as the Marina Lighthouse portion of the plan development. What the request tonight is to remove this parcel from this plan development handbook. The... In reviewing the findings, the removal of the Marina Lighthouse portion of the plan development handbook will not affect the public welfare or health of the Sparks Marina area. This project has not been developed, and is the only parcel that's not been developed. This is the RV park, which has been developed, and then we've got the Maverick and a car wash on this property, which is called... in the handbook is referred to as Buck and Deer Landing. The applicant is requesting to remove this parcel so that it can be combined with this eight-acre parcel to the north for future development. This request does not depart from the zoning or subdivision regulations that would be otherwise applicable to the property. This request will not change the previously approved ratio of residential to non-residential, especially since there's not been any residential portion in this plan development handbook. It will not change the previously approved open space requirements or the maintenance provisions in this plan development. And it does not impact the already developed portions of the plan development. Any impacts related to the neighborhood from a future project on this parcel would be proposed to be... that's being proposed to be removed tonight would be addressed with the development application at that time. The application's term and conditions intended to protect the interests of the public, residents and owners during an extended development period are not modified by this amendment request tonight, and the proposed amendment only removes the lighthouse portion of the plan development. Also, part of the request tonight is a final handbook amendment, and staff has reviewed this in light of a final handbook for the Marina Landing Plan Development. And based on the provisions listed in the NRS, staff is of the opinion that the proposed amendment for the Marina Landing Plan Development is in substantial compliance with the tentatively approved plan as approved by city council. The final handbook, draft handbook, does not vary the proposed residential density since there's no residential in this handbook. It does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential, again, because there's no residential. There is no increase of the floor area proposed for non-residential, as they are actually removing a parcel, and there is no increase in the total ground floor area because, again, they are removing a parcel. Due to the fact that this request is an amendment to the recorded final handbook, staff has determined that this should be a public hearing. So we have agendized this item tonight as a public hearing. Staff recommends approval of the tentative and final request as submitted before you tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Melby, the drawing that you have up on the screen here isn't in the packet. I see that it's the same. That one's labeled and has the blue outline along the boundary of the entire project. Would you make sure that Ms. Smith gets a copy of that document and that it's entered into the record for tonight's proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is actually the same, but I added this afternoon the blue outline. There was some discussion at study session on Tuesday, so I wanted to make sure that it was clear understanding tonight at the meeting that you understood the boundary of the plan development. But I'll make sure that she gets a copy.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Drilling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. Karen did a very thorough job explaining what we have requested. This is the first of two items that you'll see on this tonight. Really, the end goal is to ultimately rezone this property to bring it further in conformance with the master plan, that being the TOD overlay that this area has, and we're in agreement with staff's recommendation. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Commissioner? This is a... This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the... like to open that public hearing? Would anyone like to come forward and make a comment? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commissioners for comment, please. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, unless there's any comments. I moved a... I moved forward a recommendation to the city council for tentative and final approval of a request for an amendment to the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 16013, adopting findings PDA through PDG, and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report. Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There's a second item related to PCN 16013. It's consideration of and possible action to rezone approximately 10.23 acres from the new urban district to a mixed-use district located at 675 Gateway Drive, Sparks, Nevada. Ms. Melby presenting.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you is a Part II request for this amendment. What they're requesting is to rezone approximately 10.23 acres from NUD to mixed-use development, located along Marina. It's these two properties. This was about approximately eight acres, and this is 2.47 acres. As presented in the previous item, the 2.7... 2.46 acre parcel is being removed for the Marina Landing Plan Development and will be joined with this eight acres to the north. This request involves both these parcels. Both parcels are zone NUD, but one is part of the Marina Landing Handbook while the other one is just has the NUD zoning on it. This request will change the zoning from NUD to mixed-use development, which permits multifamily residential, commercial, and/or office uses. This application does not include any development plans at this time. That would be reviewed as a separate application. With development of the property, the applicant will make sure that the... the city will make sure that the project's architecture is in keeping with the area's character, provides pedestrian and street connections, along with being consistent with the uses within the area. Staff finds that the zone change with the... is consistent with our master plan and the entire land use designation. Their current existing land use designation on this property is mixed residential and mixed use commercial, which would be consistent with the uses that I stated. The parcels are located within the Sparks Marina area, which is developing as a mix of uses, multifamily, mobile home park, RV park, mini warehouse project, commercial uses, and then also the Legends Mall, Outlet Mall. Any potential impacts from the development of these parcels, again, will be... that are being requested to be rezoned tonight, will be addressed with either an administrative review or a conditional use process, depending on which kind of application that comes in. Public notice has been given and being represented as the Planning Commission hearing tonight. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this project.
Were there any... Ms. Melby, were there any letters of opposition to this?
We have not received any correspondence from the notice team.
Mr. Chairman, Karen, if... once a developer finds out what they're going to put in there, and if it is going to be conditioned, does it come back in front of the Planning Commission?
It depends on what project they're going to be bringing in. At this point, we don't know what they're going to develop, so it would depend on what that project is.
But if it's administrative review, it doesn't?
If it's an administrative review, it will not be coming before the Planning Commission.
Right. But if it's going to be a condition use permit, then it does?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Further questions from the commissioners? Would the applicant like to come forward? We recognize you.
Thank you again. For the record, Andy Drilling with Wood Rogers. Again, we're in agreement with staff's recommendation. We feel that this better reflects the vision of the Prairie Way Transit Oriented Development Corridor. The applicant does have plans in the future to develop this as a multifamily project, which would be an administrative permit, so we'll look forward to working with staff on that in the coming months upon approval. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Could you tell me, do they have plans already that they might want to do with this?
Yes, we plan... the plan right now is that it would be a multifamily development, so apartments.
Well, this isn't anything to do with it, other than the fact from my own thing, I would sure like to know that. I see that in the front of that RV park, some very attractive landscaping, and I would sure like to see in the future development that that could stay if possible, but I have no idea yet.
And I think there would be some streetscape enhancements that would need to happen along Marina Gateway in particular. I think that's the landscaping you might be talking about. So yes, we would need to keep that and probably enhance it a little more even.
Right. As I say, it's... just for my own benefit, I happened to notice that the other day, that it is very attractive in that... as you enter that RV park, and it's some great landscaping in there.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, along the side of one side, the street miles per hour really drops. Will that stay that way? Going out on Lincoln?
I don't think there's any intensive change of speed limits on this surrounding streets.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to come forward and voice a comment? I'd like to open a public hearing. There being none, coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Back to the commissioners for comment, please. Mr. Chairman, before anybody makes a motion, can I... I need to ask Karen another question.
Sure.
Is there... to the east of this, on the other side of Marina Gateway, is there more multifamily units going over there?
Yes, we had an administrative review. It might have been at that time a site plan review, but we did review a project on the property to the east here for... I believe, my memory is 960 units potentially. But we haven't seen any development. Besides the administrative review, we have not seen plans at this point.
Okay.
So we're coming up a year and a half since that, or something like that, I think, aren't we?
It's a project...
On that project?
That approval will expire in August of this year.
Got you.
And the applicant is aware of that, correct?
We have called them and told them, yes. Reminded them.
Any further questions for Ms. Melby? Chair to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Okay, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for rezoning associated with PCN 16013, based on findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next public hearing item is PCN 16015. Consideration of and possible action on conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a 32-unit multifamily project consisting of 32 buildings, clubhouse, and associated amenities on a site approximately 37.41 acres in size in the plan development of Pioneer Meadows. Presenter, Mr. Ian Crittenden.
Planning Commissioners, Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner. Yeah, so this is a application for a conditional use permit to permit, as was said, 32 buildings amongst the clubhouse and some other associated buildings for 312 dwelling units in Pioneer Meadows. The handbook in Pioneer Meadows requires, and so does our standard zoning, requires that any apartment complex or multifamily complex over 110 units come through for a conditional use permit, so that's why this is in front of you today. This area has been designated as multifamily since at least 2006. If you look at the amendments to the Pioneer Meadows handbook, it's been considered or anticipated to become multifamily throughout that. The infrastructure has been built for that kind of... that use. So if we look at the site plan here really quick, just to kind of get your bearings... So here we can see Vista Boulevard. I know the site map is not great. Vista Boulevard here. This is Wingfield Hills Road that comes up around the top and does not extend over the top of this property at this time. And then this is Rolling Hills that extends along the south border. And the property we're talking about for the apartment complex is this parcel and a little sliver of this parcel. So both these parcels were noticed as part of the notice team, but that's because we don't have a boundary that exists for the one parcel now, so both were noticed. But it will be mostly this parcel and a piece of this that does some road alignment and some other things. So Rolling Hills here was designed for this kind of capacity. So it was designed for this capacity, the other infrastructure was designed with this kind of capacity in mind, so those were not undue concerns in this project. One caveat that... or one issue that was brought up as we looked through this, there is a... an amendment to the plan development handbook for Pioneer Meadows that's been submitted and will be processed very soon that's going to change the way they associate or count how many parking spaces are required. This... they're proposing... Oh, I've got it right in front of me, and I'm not going to be able to see it.
Page 3. 639.
639 is what's required per the handbook now.
591.
591, sorry. It's probably right in front of you. I just can't see it. 591 is what they're proposing. That 591 reflects the requested amendment to the handbook. We had a similar case like this recently, and we added a condition to this, to the approval as well, that basically says they'll meet whatever is in place at the time of pulling permits, and if that is... that request is not approved, we'll have to figure out if we change the mix, adding parking spaces, whatever it'll take to get it there. And so the applicant's aware of that, and they feel okay with that. There's another site plan that's kind of... It's making it hard to see. So that's kind of... I've got it. Yeah. No, that's right. Okay, so this is a better, kind of more colorful picture of the layout. The landscaping is appropriated. They'll obviously need to provide working landscape plans at the time of permits, and they're aware of that. The proposed building, architecture, and facades meet the requirements for articulation and color and materials, and staff feels comfortable with those. As was asked at the last application, there hasn't been any comments that we've received on this... on this project, so we don't know if there's any outstanding concerns, but, you know, I think because this has been anticipated as multifamily since the inception of this project, most of the people that are adjacent knew it was coming and were not particularly concerned. It meets with the findings required for a conditional use permit. We would make those findings, and staff recommends approval of this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mr. Crittenden? Would the applicant like to come forward? Welcome.
Good evening. Ken Anderson with Odyssey Engineering. I've spoke with applicant, and they are acceptable to the conditions. If you have any questions, I can... I can answer.
Are there any questions for the applicant? There being none. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to come forward? There being none, we're going to close the public hearing and bring the agenda item back to the dais, to the commissioners. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to approve conditional use permit SP 160002, associated with PCN 16015, adopting findings C1 through C6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 8, as listed in the staff report.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Good luck, sir. There is a general business item. Any public comment? This is for a general public comment, limited to items that do not appear on the agenda, and is limited to more than three minutes. Would anyone like to come forward and make a comment?
I'm not public, but I would like to remind you that we sent you an email this week for the bus tours, for the comprehensive plan, and I would like you... if you could please RSVP to Rad Strategies, we would really like you guys to participate in our bus tour. We've got, what, the 17th? I know the 19th. I can't remember the third date.
Karen, there's... I see there's three times.
Three times.
Three different days.
We've picked three different times and three different times of the day so that people can pick which one works best for your schedule.
I have a... I was going to say, so you're going to have three tours?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All the same.
Three different days. Uh-huh. And three different times.
Okay.
What's the departure... place of departure for the...
They said through the information I signed.
Yeah, we're going to... Once you get signed up, then we're going to give you... But I think they're talking about leaving from the Outlet Mall, because that would be a good spot for the bus to get people, and it also provides a good spot where people can park their personal vehicles.
I gather from... I put in for today for the 17th.
Okay.
And I gathered that, because they immediately responded to me that further information would be coming, so I gather that time and place would be zeroed in by that time.
Yeah. So I just wanted to remind you. And then the other thing, we may end up having to juggle things around because we can't have more than three planning commissioners without a public notice, right? Is it three? Without public... Oh, okay.
We just can't sit together?
You just can't... You just can't make any decisions or talk about making any decisions. Sit on a bus together and enjoy the sights. That's right.
But I just wanted to remind you.
Delivery's fine, Commissioner.
You have franking privilege. All right. Are there any other items under general business? Any comments from the commissioners? There being none, I'd like to advance adjournment. All in favor? Meeting is closed. Meeting is closed.